All right, we're good. Are you good, Madam Clerk?
Okay.
Okay. I will call this special meeting to order. If you'll all join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. This council, uh, special council meeting is open to the public in limited seating for the COVID screening, temperatures, face coverings, and things of that nature. Also, this meeting is conducted via the Zoom system and streamed on the city's website, YouTube, and Spectrum Channel 2. The public will be able to address the council during the public participation, and the clerk will provide those details when we get to there. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes, we're all present. Okay. Declarations, conflicts of interest, seeing none. Moving on to approval agenda as posted or...
So moved.
Oh sure?
Second.
Second. Clerk call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. So the agenda will keep as is posted. Public participation. This is, uh, limited to items described in the notice for this meeting, which will be engineering and on, uh, from the rest that we hadn't completed in the last meeting. Um, the public participation budget workshop will also be open for the, the conclusion for anyone who wishes to speak as well pertaining to engineering and all the others. Um, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to address council concerning any item that has been described in the notice for this meeting. For members of the public who are participating in person and who are interested in addressing the council, please raise your hand once the mayor opens public comment and before she closes public comment. For members of the public participating remotely, please raise your hand or use the star nine feature from your telephone keypad. Members of the public participating in person will be called upon first, and then we will move to those participating remotely. For those participating remotely, they will hear an automated prompt indicating their line has been unmuted, and that is when their comment period will begin. Lastly, we request members to choose to address the council. To please state their first and last name in the event that any follow-up is needed, however, that is not mandatory.
All right. And for clarification, it's from planning on, not engineering. I apologize. Mr. Bray was getting concerned there. Um, okay. So, uh, who is present here that wishes to speak? Yes, come on.
We need to flip them.
Hello? Mayor Blue Black, members of the council, Chad Hackett, President of Turlock Firefighters, Local 2434. I'm here speaking about the budgetary process and its impact on Turlock firefighters for the city of Turlock. We were told by this council just to sign the last contract. Some council members stated it was another council's contract, and we wanted to start fresh. All of this was so we can enter another negotiations before the start of the fiscal year 2122. We have done this only to be told by the city negotiator that we are not prepared to work on, on a new negotiation until the fiscal budget is completed for 2122. You have acted in a poor manner, and I'll stop short of calling it bad faith. You told us to sign so we could start it fresh, but now we're being told we have to wait for the budget. This is plainly speaking out of both sides of your mouth. Give us what you said you would, a fresh, honest negotiation. The most urgent matter in your fire department is retention. The fire department has lost five members since November. We currently have another member in the process of leaving for another city. We have heard from this council, you want the best fire department around. Your fire department cannot be the best when 54 years of experience walks out the door for other cities that support them. We are a stepping stone department for other cities and fire departments. You do not build a championship culture here by subsidizing other cities with talent from Turlock while you pay to train them and the experience gained while working for the city of Turlock. This is a doormat mentality that sends a very poor message to the Turlock firefighters, fire management, and, most importantly, the citizens of Turlock. Furthermore, at last budget meeting, it was stated at the dais that a good majority of the overtime is driven by compensable leave accruals within the fire department. Unfortunately, this is another unwarranted tack on the firefighters. A good majority of the fire department's overtime budget went to fill positions for those who had left for other agencies, frozen positions, firefighters out on comp, and the 13 firefighters who had COVID. However, the retention issue still remains silent. Why is that? We, as Local 2434, would plead with the council to tell the whole truth when addressing the fire department. Another example came from the previous budget meeting when it was stated at the dais that many fire departments negotiated and agreed to accept holiday pay and lieu checks. This city has never asked for holiday pay and lieu checks. In fact, Local 2434 has proposed it twice and has been turned down both times by the city. We cannot compare Turlock Fire to other departments when we continuously fail to recognize they are compensated, on average, 32 to 42 percent, depending on position, below the same cities you have used to evaluate department head pays as was stated in the last budget meeting. In closing, I would like to know how we could try to compare equitably within local fire departments without comparing all aspects. These are the gains that will continue to push great firefighters out the door. These are firefighters that were firefighters of the year, taught nationwide, taught our fire academies locally and state levels, and generally good employees. As stated in last negotiation, note, last negotiations, we will continue to lose firefighters. On behalf of the Turlock firefighters, please tell the whole truth to the citizens you serve. They deserve the facts and the truth, as so do we. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other person in the public here? All right, we will move on to virtual, please.
Any member of the public would like to address the council, please raise your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no public comment.
All right, closing public participation. Moving on to the fiscal year general budget. Uh, Mr. Hampton?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, once again, this evening before you is, uh, Budget Workshop Number Two, Fiscal Year 2122. I'm going to spare you, uh, the reading of the staff report. Uh, it's a mirror image nearly of Workshop Number One's staff report. However, I do want to walk you through some of the information that you have this evening. Um, following, um, following your staff report, you'll see that you have, as previously mentioned, planning, engineering, um, and information technology departments, which, uh, will be presented to you tonight. And then also, in your budget package, you have information that you requested during, um, Workshop Number One, and these are the items that were not emailed to you electronically, which are fiscal year 1920 and 2021, frozen positions, salary survey schedule ranges, and then, um, we will then shift into presentations on the CIP five-year plan. We will review the 1920, 2021 equipment replacement restoration potential, if that's what council chooses to do. So, in, in short, um, just to make clear what this is, uh, in 1920, 2021, the city opted to suspend, uh, allocating funds to your equipment replacement, and they are now, um, insufficiently funded for the, uh, replacement schedule of your equipment. So you'll see the cost analysis to address that. You will then shift into this year's equipment replacement fund allocation for, um, 2122, and then we will take you through the, uh, engineering, uh, fund deficit, as well as talk a little bit about, uh, the city utilities, water and sewer services, uh, charge fee that has been kicked around for the last several years. I do want to just make a couple of comments. Um, at the last budget workshop, uh, we provided you with nearly three hours of information, a lot of information, and we're going to do the same thing again this evening. I do want to compliment the council. Um, following that workshop, each and every one of you reached out to me for further clarification on questions that you had about that information. Um, I applaud that. That means you're reading your budget, you're engaged, and you clearly, uh, are ensuring that you understand the information before you, and I would encourage that same thing after this council workshop. If you have questions, don't hesitate to call me. Um, at the end of this meeting, staff will be looking for directions relative to augmentations, and we would like to also please remind you that at your last meeting, you directed staff, uh, to reorganize, um, the, the city department structure, um, separating the administrative services divi- or department and the finance function within that department and create a finance department specifically to address issues that have been identified for the last five to seven years within your audits, as well as by your staff and your city manager and your city attorney. Um, also, I want to reiterate, uh, the concern that I expressed to you at the last meeting about the requirement by the California codes, specifically the government code, about, um, the vestment in a city requiring a city police chief and a city fire chief. You currently do not have those positions funded, and however, you have them staffed, but funded, um, out of their prior positions as either an assistant chief, deputy chief, or a police captain. And so my recommendation still stands, as I mentioned previously. If you're, if you're going to continue operating with, um, um, acting or interim, I'm sorry, interim police and fire chiefs, please fund the positions and pay them accordingly out of those funds, and leave the positions that they, um, are, that they have transitioned out of unfunded, taking your savings at that point, so that we can establish that we are staffing the positions that were mandated to staff by the California codes. And, uh, with that, if you don't have any question, I'm prepared to proceed.
Proceed, please.
Okay.
Who's up?
Let's, uh, start with planning.
Mr. Bray. He thought I had omitted it.
I was there either way.
Lighten in your load.
Is this on? There we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and, uh, council. The Development Services Department is made up of planning, building, engineering, and transit divisions. Uh, tonight, we will be discussing planning and engineering, with building and transit being presented with the non-general fund workshops. The budgets before you tonight are a status quo budget for both planning and engineering with proposed augmentations mainly in staffing. The planning status quo budget identifies approximately $886,000 in expenses and has a staff of four full-time employees. The proposed augmentations for planning, uh, are to unfreeze the assistant planner and create a long-range planning and growth fund. The additional planner would help by, uh, providing reduced processing time for entitlements and permits, time for performing Secur- SEQA, uh, California Environmental Quality Act review and analysis, and time for long-range planning efforts. The establishment of a long-range planning and growth fund will allow the city to set aside funds specifically for performing work on the identified master plans and general plan implementation measures. Specific planning documents include updating the downtown overlay district design guidelines, the master plan for the Montana West County Island, uh, updates to the parks master plan and fee study, and, uh, preparing future master plans for Southeast Number Two and Southeast Number Three. Uh, that concludes my augmentation request for the planning division, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for planning before proceeding on to engineering.
So, I'm curious, you said it's going to reduce the amount of time it takes. Um, have you any idea what that sound, like, really looks like? I'm just curious.
It's hard to, it's hard to identify a number, a quantified number, uh, because it really depends on the amount of applications and the complexity of the applications that come forward. Um, but I can tell you historically, the planning division, um, has had a staff of anywhere between five and six, and our turnaround times were quicker than they are now. Um, so adding the additional frozen, uh, planner position would provide for additional staff time to process those.
Any other questions for Mr. Bray? Councilmember Larson?
Um, just to clarify, we have listed here the salary reimbursements from the cannabis program. I just want to make it clear for the public that we are using obvious, that we were, we're doing that to, uh, further our commitment that the program or setting up the program was going to pay for itself, correct? And so all of these salary reimbursements are for the work that our planning division did to pre- prepare the program. Is that correct, Mr. Bray?
Yes, that is correct. It was the work setting up for each individual, um, entity in processing the CUPs and the development agreements. Uh, it is reimbursement for those work, yes.
Councilmember, strike.
Um, related to the question about turnaround times, do we currently track the metrics about how long our estimated turnaround time is for the process?
Uh, we do track turnaround times, uh, but they're typically associated with building permits or, uh, engineering encroachment and grading permits, not necessarily, uh, planning entitlements. Um, those, the entitlement process, uh, usually takes longer. Um, it, it, it really depends on the specific project, if it needs a general plan amendment and a rezone, or if it's just a simple minor administrative, uh, agreement. Um, so there isn't necessarily, um, an established metric for entitlements, um, per se.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, on to, uh, the engineering division. The engineering, uh, status quo budget identifies approximately $2,583,000 in expenses and has a staff of 13 full-time employees. The three main functional areas in engineering are development engineering, capital improvements, and traffic and transportation engineering. The proposed augmentation for engineering, uh, is as follows. Unfreeze five positions, including the professional land surveyor, land surveyor technician, traffic technician, engineering technician, and assistant engineer. Additionally, the augmentation request to reclassify one existing engineer and one existing admin position to create succession planning and reduce an organizationally flat structure. The augmentation also, uh, adds one administrative analyst position to oversee the assessment district program. Currently, the city does not have a singular point of contact for, uh, responsibility or accountability with the assessment districts. Uh, and as the saying goes, it's hard to have someone accountable when everyone's responsible. So this augmenta- this augmentation changes that, uh, by providing a lead point person that would be responsible, uh, for the day-to-day operations of the assessment districts. All of the above positions create revenue to offset their costs. The pro- the proposed positions have expenses that sum to $533,000. The revenue these positions would generate amount to $701,000. Uh, that's a positive difference of nearly $170,000. These positions would generate revenue for the engineering division to help offset the administrative overhead, utilizing the indirect cost rate method. The engineering division is required to prepare and submit to the state the indirect cost rate in order to seek reimbursement on overhead in accordance with federal and state guidelines, and this process allows for, uh, the capture of expenses on what would be otherwise non-billable items, uh, such as general overhead, admit and management time, vehicles and equipment, et cetera. The last three items of the augmentation relate to setting aside funds to perform an update of Development Services strategic plan and creating a GIS coordinator position and contract services. The city currently does not have any positions that focus on or are responsible solely for the GIS, and a well-functioning GIS is critical to all departments. This augmentation would create a GIS coordinator position that would spearhead the GIS renovation efforts. The GIS...
One second.
Yes.
Before you get too far.
Yes, I'm sorry. Geographic information sys- systems.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Acronyms always get me sometimes. Uh, additionally, the GIS coordinator would identify a funding strategy to fund the GIS for future years to include, uh, permit charges, user fees, uh, and proportional, uh, department transfers. Uh, so that concludes the augmentations for the engineering division. However, as the city manager, uh, stated earlier, uh, we were going to have a discussion on the engineering fund balance later this evening. I think it makes sense to have that discussion now, so council, uh, is discussing, discussing the engineering division budget in, uh, you know, not a bifurcated manner.
Can I just, uh, ask, in regard to the GIS coordinator and contract services, um, should you not get the positions that you've listed, uh, prior to that, getting this in advance would be moot, or does it, does it matter?
No, the GIS, uh, specifically the GIS position matters because it is not dependent, uh, necessarily on all of the other positions. There's one critical position, uh, which is your land surveyor position. A lot of the, uh, technical, uh, duties that the GIS person would, uh, perform, and the accuracy of the data and the release of that data are all the, uh, functions of, uh, professional land surveying per the government code. So the land surveying, the land surveyor, uh, and the GIS coordinator, uh, those two kind of are tied.
Councilmember Larson?
Before you get into the, um, the account funds, could you go to the previous slide? Yeah, so, um, uh, and sorry to cut you off guard if you don't know the exact years, but all of these positions weren't just frozen and, or unfunded in the last budget year, correct? Some of these haven't been funded for years.
That would be correct, and so, uh, a majority of the positions were frozen, uh, within the past two budget cycles. Um, there were some positions that were vacant but not frozen the previous year, if, if, if that makes sense.
Okay, so essentially, your, these positions aren't, the GIS one sounds, that one's new.
The, there are two new positions that are not just an unfreezing of existing allocated positions. It is the staff services analyst for the assessment districts.
Right.
And the GIS coordinator. Both of those are new positions and not a direct result of a vacancy or a freezing.
So besides those two, these are, you're essentially restoring the service level levels that were provided in this department, correct?
I'm restoring some of the service level. I am not asking for all of the
Right.
frozen positions to be filled, and, um, as identified on the slide, it's unrealistic to fill all of those positions by July 1st of
Sure.
2021. Um, so the, the positions that have identified 1122, uh, it's anticipated, and those are the costs and revenues associated with filling those positions, uh, January 1st.
Okay, perfect. And then, for the GIS, um, positions, um, there's also, is there also grants available to kind of kickstart that process into sort of creating the map and things like that? I know that we've looked into that before, but these positions sound key in regards to the, you know, the entirety of that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with grants out there, uh, for GIS, um, services. I, I would imagine that, um, someone that is well-versed in the field would be more familiar with those. Uh, and it's something we can always reach out to, uh, the Stan State, um, as they have a GIS program, if there's an opportunity, uh, either, um, for grants or just for assistance or, um, you know, some sort of, uh, mutually beneficial, uh, exchange we have with them.
Okay, let's get on to the engineering.
Excellent. I was going to ask if there's any questions on that, so that, um, that is perfect. So, the engineering divi- the engineering division budget, um, the, the, sorry, this is the first engineering division budget that this council has been a part of. Uh, so I want to provide some context to the engineering fund balance. Revenues from the engineering division can be broken into three functional areas, as previously identified: development, capital improvements, and traffic and transportation. Capital improvement projects, uh, receive revenue based upon time spent, uh, on each project. Staff tracks their time and then bills as a reimbursement wherever the project is funded from, whether that's Measure L, SB 1, street-funded projects, or that's a state and federal grant, or it's one of our department projects. Development activities, uh, collect fees from users, for example, encroachment and grading permits, uh, based upon the adopted engineering fee study. Some activities achieve 100% cost recovery, while some have been reduced by council to make the fee more palatable. Uh, in this regard, uh, the engineering and planning divisions are very similar, where the city has balanced fee recovery versus economic development potential. Uh, and then lastly, the traffic and transportation activities are mostly non-billable, meaning that engineering, uh, division does not have a funding source, uh, nor is there a user fee associated with the responsibility of managing the transportation network. Uh, so, when Development Services Department was created in 2006, the engineering division operated under a different fee structure that provided a healthy reserve when development opportunities were plentiful. Uh, additionally, many development projects, um, take multiple years, if not decades, to finalize. So in the early years of DSD and the engineering division, a lot of permits were started and funds were collected for work that was to be done in future years. The funds collected allowed engineering to provide, uh, those services in future years. Around 2014, the reserves in engineering were depleted and created a deficit in the engineering balance. Through city management and council at the, at the time, it was determined that the engineering fund balance would remain negative. Um, the engineering fund continued to deficit spend without an identified general fund contribution until fiscal year 2019. In fiscal year 2019, management and council identified an amount in the adopted budget that arrested the growth of the negative deficit. Again, in fiscal year 2020, management and council identified an amount in the adopted budget not to grow the negative balance. So it's not necessarily addressing what had previously occurred, but it's not continuing that deficit's, um, uh, growth. The status quo budget presented to you tonight continues that same pattern and identifies, uh, transfer of funds from the general fund to not grow the deficit. The funds cover fee subsidies approved by council, traffic and transportation costs that are not billable, uh, and other activities the engineering staff performs that cannot be billed. Uh, so I hope that background wasn't too lengthy, but I wanted to make sure I provide that context, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Bray? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so who's going to do IT, Mr. Hampton? Not you?
Mr. Susan.
Mr. Susan. All right, welcome. You never get up here. It's a big day.
Got me here or there?
Wherever you'd like, sir.
Okay, I'll sit for a bit. So what we have is in our, um, for budget augmentation, there was some, we started in 2021, and we needed to redo all of the job descriptions, because as you know, technology changes, so we need to redo those and get them more up to date. So, what you see in the budget is the requirement, I'm trying to make sure that we get, um, reclass of the analyst position, the, from analyst to coordinator, and that is because their duties have expanded. We are a small division, and so, as those demands are required, the reclass helps us to coordinate projects a little more efficiently because we really need, there's a lot of software updates and other things, so we'd like to separate the network infrastructure and software updates because of the demands for, for supporting all of the cities and divisions.
Any questions? Councilmember Larson?
Thanks for joining us. Um, I've never asked this, but it's just interesting, I guess. So 60% of the, the services you guys provide is for the general fund and 40% of it's for non-general fund. Is it because that's how much, you guys do, about 40% of work for non-general fund departments and divisions, and then you...
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We cover everything from the police department all the way out to the corporation yard, municipal services. We support everyone because of, our whole network covers the full area.
And that's just how the, the split works? It's 60% of depart-
Absolutely.
Oh, interesting.
Years back, it used to be that Muni had their own IT, but then at some point, it was decided that we should merge. This was some years back. I guess I have too much institutional knowledge now.
It's a good thing, thank you. So you had to change, like, Commodore Experience? Get it up to name? It's good.
Actually, they were AT&amp;T computers.
Okay. Any other questions for, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Frozen positions, are we going to talk about that, Mr. Hampton?
Yes, um, if you flip to your tab on frozen positions, what you have before you is, um, an inventory of the positions that have been frozen over the last two years, uh, some of which Mr. Bray spoke to, and this gives you, um, a clear understanding of, or I should say more clear information of exactly what was frozen, the year that it was frozen, and you will see that during the- that during the 2019, 20, and through the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, there's a total of 35 positions frozen for a reduction in the city budget of $4,493,650. Any questions? Okay, again, this is just offering council information as you requested.
So, could I have clarification then? So, of those 37 positions that are just money that was coming from the general fund, then would it, in fact, like the finance director and administrative services would just, it wouldn't be coming from Measure A, it would be coming from these positions here, right?
Yes, as, restate the question, Mayor, before I answer-
So, we don't need to take, step into Measure A to put a, a finance director or administrative services in, in the line items, because we have 37 positions that are open here, correct? It's part of our general fund that we're just sitting there?
They are expensed to the general fund, as well as across the enterprise funds. So, both of those positions are expensed across all departments. And, yes, it would be funded out of the general fund and enterprise fund, both.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding these frozen positions? Okay, salary survey? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's on here, but do you have an estimation of what, what is general fund revenue or expenses versus enterprise?
I'm gonna defer to Nadine. She will have a more clear explanation for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What finance does is, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we allocate out the positions in the general fund as an administrative allocation for services they provide to all departments, including the non-general fund. That is done based on staff members that are full-time, as well as based on their expense budget. So an allocation is made, and so, part of the salaries are paid by non-general fund, and part are paid by general fund, based on that allocation.
Any other questions?
Do you, do you, of the frozen positions, do you have an estimation of how much of the total expenses would be a general fund expense?
All of these positions are currently in the general fund. Once they are allocated out, the administrative are the ones that are allocated out. It's probably about 50/50. The public safety are 100% general fund, and those do not get allocated out to non-general fund.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the next item. Are you, is that you, Nadine? Salary survey? Mr. Hampton?
I can take that, Mayor. As the staff was asked to conduct a salary survey as they worked to put together, for both the finance director and the administrative services director, although the administrative services director salary already existed, we wanted to make sure that it was comparable to the market, and we also wanted to make sure that our finance director was comparable to the market. So, the spreadsheet that you have before you identifies the cities that we surveyed, which were primarily up and down the 99 corridor. It includes, with the exception of Davis, Clovis, Davis, Livermore, Lodi, and Man Tika. And what we, what we were able to conclude from this is that our existing administrative services division director's salary is sufficient and supported by the survey. And as we looked at all the department director's salaries, and if you'll look under Turlock, you will see that, other than the police and fire chiefs, all of the director's salaries are the same. And so, when we proposed a salary for, for the new finance director position, we simply made parity with all of the non-safety director positions. And the salary, and the survey supported that as well.
Questions, Mr. Hampton?
So, we provide this to answer questions that we previously had regarding how did we come up with the salary for the positions.
Appreciate you doing that. Any questions for Mr. Hampton? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the five-year plan?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, that completes the information that we put together and supplement that was requested. And so now, we're gonna shift into new information. And we're going to talk about the five-year capital improvement program. And we have Stephen Fremming here from Engineering to do that for us, so if you'd please come forward.
Oh, he wants to stand, all right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The City of Turlock owns and operates a significant amount of capital infrastructure. This infrastructure is essential to, for the city to offer its core services, such as police, fire, water, sewer, storm drains, streets, parks, and landscaped areas. The Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is a five-year plan to deliver capital improvement projects to maintain infrastructure and quality of life. The CIP doesn't represent all capital project needs within the city, but it does identify those that have been specifically identified and requested by the various city departments. So I reached out to all city departments and requested that they provide us with a list and a description of projects that, that were anticipated to be needed within the next five years. And that is what this, this spreadsheet that's currently on the screen is, is summarizing. It's broken down by, by area, starting with public safety, moves through information technology, streets and signals, water system, wastewater treatment system, sewer, storm drains, parks and community facilities, housing, airport, and transit-related projects. The departments responded to my request for information by providing a potential funding source for the project, as indicated in this column here, identifying a budget fund number through which the project will be funded, the general ledger account number. These three columns that follow here are the estimated costs in thousands of dollars, broken out by city match funds that are required, any available grant funds that have been identified, and a total estimated cost. Projects often span over more than one fiscal year, and so, what we see here in the following columns are potential expenditure schedule, beginning in fiscal year 21, 22, and ending in fiscal year 25, 26. And then, for those projects that extend beyond the five-year program, there's a, a column for any, any funding needed beyond the five-year term of the, of the program. This CIP helps staff to prioritize needs and resources to deliver these projects, and coordinate on location so there's not duplication of effort. For example, if we're in need to replace a, a utility line, however, you know, paving is also required. So it helps to coordinate and, and improve efficiencies. This CIP program includes both these summary sheets here, the first five or so sheets, as well as individual project detail sheets, that the various departments have provided information on. There's a lot of information here, and if there's any specific question that you have with related to projects or information displayed, I'd be happy to answer that. And if, if I can't, then I would request assistance from the department that provided the information.
Questions for Mr. Fremming? Councilmember Stradie?
This is a question I posed for Nathan a while back. I, I'm not sure if this would fall into this section of allocating of funds, but do we have an estimation of the cost for maintaining our entire road, our road networks? So if we were gonna be doing, if we had to write a check up here today to make sure that our roads didn't deteriorate beyond what that number would be?
200 million, Mr. Bray?
We'll just use all, we'll, we'll use all the mics today. There we, yeah, there we go. Okay, the, the rough number is, you know, 175 to 200 million. What that does is, that brings the entire network up to a maintainable state. That does not include the ongoing maintenance cost, once it's already there. That number has not been identified yet. But to bring it up to a state that can be maintained, it's roughly 175 to 200 million.
Councilor Larson?
So on that same subject, I love this breakdown, because it has like slurry seals, and I love that it's, it's very clear that, you know, how we pay for those things. Slurry seals being road maintenance, it comes right out of assessment districts. And as we all know, and as I've said up here time and time again, there's a lot of our road network that doesn't, isn't have the benefit of being a part of an assessment district, mostly in my district and in Ms. Moniz's district as well. So with that being said, we don't have, you know, slurry seal or road maintenance identified for our maintainable roads, not the ones that are so far gone that we need to dedicate a larger amount of money to rehabilitate them, but for road maintenance on our maintainable road network that are not a part of assessment districts that can pay for them themselves. Obviously, that's not here, because we've never done something like that. We've dedicated a meaningful amount of money, yes, not 200 million, because that would, that's our entire road network. But there are maintainable roads that we are losing day in and day out, because we don't have dedicated funds out of our general fund to maintain those roads. Is that a correct assessment?
Yeah, that, that would be correct. Ideally, if that were the case, the amount that the council wishes to spend on an annual basis, that would become a project that is identified here in the CIP. So we could, one, make sure that the CIP matches the budget, and make sure that engineering staff has the appropriate resources to ensure delivery of that project.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Fremming. All right. Now, you wanna get on the vehicles?
Sure. Mayor, members of council, the item up next for you is an overview of the Vehicle and Small Equipment Replacement Fund replenishment cost. And as I mentioned earlier in my comments, as I indicated, that for the most part, during fiscal year 1920 and 2021, allocation to this fund to replace our, our equipment, understanding that the amount that gets allocated is based up on the age and serviceability forecast for each piece of equipment. And during 1920, 2021, the allocations to sustain this, the replacements were suspended. And so, you will, you will see, as we move to the next tab, you will see what is being requested for, just to reinstate the individual year 21, 22. So, Nadine's going to review this with you, but I want to be very clear, this would just be an allocation to catch up on the two years that were suspended. And then, right after you receive that, you're gonna hear the cost to, to reengage in the contribution for the 21, 22 fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Good evening, Mayor and Council, again. As provided in your general fund budget binder, as you can see from pages 260 to 263, you will find the cost of restoring the Small Equipment and Vehicle Set Aside Funds for fiscal year 1920 and 2021. These documents highlight a total of almost $2.2 million that were not transferred into the Small Equipment and Vehicle Set Aside Funds from general fund departments, predominantly public safety, during these two fiscal years, which was done in an effort to balance the budgets for fiscal year 1920 and 2021. Before I proceed to the next tab, are there any questions on this information?
Questions? Okay.
Okay. The following section of your budget binder, starting with page 264, are detailed worksheets for the Equipment Replacement Funds. These funds are funded with annual transfers from departmental operating budgets. The augmentation requests that are presented here are for fiscal year 21, 22, to restore the set aside suspended during fiscal year 1920 and 2021. The total for fiscal year 21, 22 augmentations is approximately $1.1 million. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we covered engineering fund deficit. Now we're on to city utilities water?
As many of the council members may be aware, and others may not be aware, the city has spent a number of years evaluating the cost that is associated with city facility use of water. And so what does that mean? That means, at this point, the city utilizes water from the enterprise system and does not pay for the water that is used out of the general fund and the enterprise funds. So I, I know it may sound awkward to recognize that we're paying ourselves, but it is a big shift, let me restate that, it is a huge shift of funding from your general fund to your enterprise fund. And then, it's also an additional revenue source from enterprise back end of the enterprise fund. So, obviously, the numbers that you see before you on your spreadsheet, which I'm gonna be calling Carl Brown up here in a minute-
And he's already here.
Oh, I'm sorry, there he is. I'm looking, going, uh-oh, I'm gonna, I'm solo on this one. I'm gonna let him go, which would not be good. But I'm gonna let him go into detail. But I want you to remember, the purpose of bringing this information to your attention is so that as you make decisions with your budget, you have all the information. The one common theme that I have heard from all five of you in my last five months here is, quote, "I didn't know that," or, quote, "we weren't advised of that." And so, the goal of, of staff, and they put a lot of effort into it, my goal has been to make sure that council knows every inch of the budget. And that has required the assistance of Julie Burke, who has come back to help us, because it's a monumental task. And, of course, Nadine has spent the last two and a half months in City Hall working on her days off. So, again, this isn't intended to paint the Green Reaper picture, and I feel like I'm doing that, but it's information that you have to have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Burke.
Mr. Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, members of the public. For those of you that don't know, my name is Carl Brown. I'm the interim municipal services deputy director. And so for the water ser, and sewer services that Acting City Manager Gary Hampton mentioned, we have approximately 365 water services and 60 sewer services. And out of those rough numbers, a total estimate for this following fiscal year, as of right now, is $875,000. And of that, approximately $500,000 is from general fund and $375,000 from non-general fund. And we're still going through those numbers, we're evaluating meters and components, making sure that billing is going to be accurate. For some of those that we do not have historical data on, because there is either no meter in place, or the meter in place has been faulty for a number of years, what we're looking at is a flat-rate metered service for those accounts, and it is in the Muni code. So, what we're gonna propose is that way of billing, and then another option to where we can bill the customer charge and the capacity fee for each one of those services. So, we can look at that and evaluate which one council would prefer. And with that, does anybody have any questions about the services?
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, there's one point that, or one fact that I want to point out. So, as Mr. Brown just outlined for you, some of these services are not metered, but will be from here on out. And some of them have defective meters, which will be replaced as you hear later this year, that we need to do meter replacement throughout the community. So, the best approach that Mr. Brown and I- So the best approach that Mr. Brown and I could come up with was to take an average from four seasonal months throughout the year. And so these are estimations based up on an average of the months of September, December, January, and March. Not a very precise manner of which doing it, but it's the best that we had to get the information to you tonight. And even at that, I know that Carl has put lots of hours into this, has brought me calculations, and I handed him back and said, nope. So he's put a lot of effort in this. I don't want you to believe that this was put together over a lunch break or on a napkin. This is about two months, maybe even longer than that worth of work. It's a lot of work. So in the future, we will be able to identify the exact usage as he outlined for you. And so if you have any questions, either Mr. Brown or myself can answer on this.
Councilmember Nester?
So on the top line there, the assessment, was it just something that we forgot to include in the expenses associated with assessments to account for water and sewer?
Historically, water and sewer haven't been built. That's just the way that it has been. We have been working on getting a listing of all the accounts together. We knew we were going to proceed with this in following budget, so we're here today to discuss that. We have all the information, we have all the locations. We just need to identify proper usage from the previous years in order to estimate an accurate budget for this next fiscal year.
When did this enactment happen?
Well, with Prop 218 and Prop 26, we need to charge ourselves for water and sewer services.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hampton?
So mayor and council, that wraps up the information presentation to tonight, or through tonight. That concludes your general fund budget workshops. We're happy to schedule a third workshop for the general fund if necessary. However, I want to remind you that you need to adopt a budget or resolution of ongoing, the ongoing current budget. I wouldn't recommend that. By the second meeting in June, we were hoping to bring it to you in the first meeting in June. Just out of cautionary note that if in fact there's an error or further adjustments that council wants at that last meeting, we can bring it back at the second meeting and we can get it adopted before July 1. I know that staff has put a lot of work into this. There's been a lot of information provided to you. As I mentioned, I feel like the Grim Reaper, but you've got to know, there's a lot of exciting things going on in the organization and in the community. There's a lot of good work being done by a lot of hardworking public employees, and we will continue to succeed and progress. And no matter what course that's taken here, your leadership team, your executive department directors will implement the vision and, you know, really the roadmap that you set forth through this budget. And so with that, I would ask that council either engage in further discussion with staff or discussion among council, and I would ask that you provide direction to the city staff on the general fund 21, 22 budget. Thank you.
Okay. Before we do that, let's go ahead and open it to the public. Anybody wishing to speak from here? Mr. Trueller, please. Don't give me a trouble.
Okay, I have two questions for staff. The first goes to engineering, and that's regarding the land surveyor. Does that position, does the city already have the surveying equipment that will be used by the land surveyor, or is that something a land surveyor provides himself, or how does that part work as far as, because it takes equipment, you've got to go out, you've got to do a lot of work. So how does that work? And then one question that actually was already answered by water and sewer, the requirements that Carl has worked on is because it's required by Proposition 218 and Prop 26. So I was just wondering, I was going to ask, how do other cities handle this while they're all doing what we should be doing or we are doing? Is that correct?
We'll have to go up there and ask them to answer it later.
We're doing what other cities are doing.
I hope.
And that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Would you ask out in virtual land if anybody wishes to ask questions or comments?
If any member of the public would like to address the council, please raise your hand. Thank you, mayor, there's no public comment.
Closing public comment? Mr. Bray, you're running up here. Mr. Brown's right behind you, you better hurry.
So to answer Mr. Trueller's question, the city already has existing surveying equipment. We've made a substantial investment in that equipment. It's, you know, the city retains it. If we were to hire someone that would come and be a city staff member, they would utilize that equipment. Currently, how the city utilizes land surveying services is when we contract with the firm, they provide their own equipment, but we currently have our own right now.
Thank you. And Mr. Brown?
To answer your question, Mr. Trueller, there are agencies, water districts, sewer districts, that have charged themselves, and there are some that are still getting in line with that process. So we're on a parallel track with local agencies and municipalities in the area.
Thank you. Okay, so as we're trying to give some direction to staff in regard to what we're going to come back with, I would just start with obviously opening up those public safety positions, the chief positions, so that we're using that appropriately. I'm just starting, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, the chief and fire.
Public safety, yes.
Yeah, the two public safety positions, we need to get those back, so we are good.
And I'd like to know what that number is on maintaining roads that are not in assessment that would require, that wouldn't require rehabilitation, so we could have that to see if it's possible for us to start putting general fund dollars towards our roads.
It's always possible, it's just a matter of how much we want to put towards it, and I would argue the point with you up here that I'm just as worried about those that are debilitated. Everybody has to get something out of this. Everybody's paying taxes, but go ahead.
Right, and I totally agree, just in terms of, you know, making it dollar stretch for the most productive way it can be. I agree with Councilmember Ossarotti, I think that we need to finally put our money where our mouth is in terms of a city. It's been a huge criticism that we have no money of our own going towards our road rehabilitation. And I understand that there are different levels of road rehabilitation needs, there are total reconstruction, there are slurry seals, there are overlays, but I think we are losing that crucial level of roads that are at a maintainable level today but won't be over the next five years, and that are only going to multiply three times over the amount that it would cost the city to rehab them. And also, and this is a question for Director Van Gilder, I know you went over the incoming, the augmentations of positions that would help with street maintenance, potholes, in addition to the equipment, so we can essentially, from my perspective, tend to pothole calls faster. So when I'm thinking of like a service level that our citizens would actually see day to day, I'm wondering how quickly would they see with these new, I know it's a very hard question to estimate, how quickly would they see a response time for their potholes? And also, I know that you talked about having, every three weeks, we get our parks mowed. I want to see our parks mowed once a week, once every 10 days. So is that in the requests that you've made, those two characteristics?
Good evening, mayor and council. Councilmember Larson, just to answer those questions, we will talk about our non-general fund budgets in the future. So you haven't, we haven't come to you with any requests to enhance our streets team. We've been very grateful for the commitment through SB 1, though, over the last couple of years. And so I would say that right now, your street maintenance team is in a very good position with the number of staff. I mean, we could always use more help, but I would say that with the addition of that second pothole team that we have never had in place before, it's essentially allowed us to double our efforts out there. But you know, as well as I know, that potholes, pothole repairs is not what people want to hear. They don't want to, they're not too crazy about that, and I get that. But from the city's liability perspective, we've, I know for a fact that we've been able to double the effort that we were doing in the past, and we're grateful for that. If that's something that the council would like me to put together to show what, you know, the addition of, you know, two more employees in the streets maintenance, you know, would do, I can put that information together. But I think that, you know, to be honest, right now, in my opinion, we have greater needs in our general fund area, and that's why I made the request that I did. In terms of the two parks positions that we've requested so that we would go from four to six, our goal with that is that our parks can get mowed every week. And that, because we would basically have a mow team that would be running every single, you know, day at some, at one of the parks around town. That's what it would do. It would be, I know that it would have an overnight impact in a positive way. It would alleviate the force staff that we have right now to be able to tend to some of those longstanding issues like irrigation challenges and things like that versus having to pull them off of the mow team, which causes our mowing to get backed up. It's just, it's a trickle-down effect. And so if you're looking for some of that low-hanging fruit and, you know, what would be the direct impact, we would absolutely be able to increase the level of mowing in our parks to, on a weekly basis, barring any major, you know, equipment failures or things of that nature. I hope that answers the question.
No, it totally doesn't. So it sounds like that's being tended to in the requests and the current, the current recommendations.
That's, that's one of my augmentation requests, is for two positions in parks in addition to the two in facilities and the superintendent position.
Right, to get a mow once a week.
That's the goal.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And the other thing that I want to bring up is just making sure that all of our fire department, firehouses are staffed 100% of the time.
So, Mr. Bray, maybe it would be helpful if you shared with us at least what it looks like if we allocate however much towards roads, what does, what's the impact of that, just in case people don't understand what that means?
Yeah, I can try and articulate that. So currently, the city spends roughly, roughly $7.5 million divided amongst its maintenance efforts. So Allison shop with the staff, the pothole crews, the line striping, the other maintenance efforts as related to median landscaping, stuff like that. That's about $2.5 million. That leaves about $5 million, if my math is correct, $4.5 to $5 million to be used on projects throughout town. Those funds are solely comprised right now of gas tax funds, Measure L, SB 1 funds, and our local street and federal grants that we receive. So in terms of making a difference in paving projects or slurry seal projects or different alternative treatments, we're spending anywhere in the neighborhood of $4.5 to $5 million a year. If, you know, if council were to make an investment of $25 million, that's five times the amount of projects that could be done right now. It depends on the type of treatment that is selected or that, you know, are we preserving a bunch of roads, are we going with more cost restrictive? You know, there is an argument to be made that with additional resources, you could take advantage of economies of scale. It's hard to put an actual number to that, you know, in terms of lane miles or square footage.
I was kind of going towards an allocation from general fund, what's the repercussion of that?
Yes.
Long-term, as far as, we have to continue, correct?
Correct, yeah. So we're speaking specifically to a, what's called a maintenance of effort, or MOE. So there are existing statutes that require councils to, in local jurisdictions, to spend discretionary funds, i.e. general funds, for a certain identified level, a calculated level, on an ongoing basis. If the council, if the local jurisdiction does not include those expenditures in a upcoming year, that jurisdiction potentially forfeits an amount for a following fiscal year. So for example, the city's MOE for Measure L, our maintenance of effort, right now is currently zero because the city has not invested or spent zero discretionary funds. If the city were to spend discretionary funds, the MOE is calculated on a rolling three-year annual cycle. So for ease of calculation, let's say the council elects to spend $5 million of discretionary funds next year. The following year, the required amount of expense would be the previous three-year average, so five divided by three, you'd get roughly $1.6 million of required discretionary fund expense. If council does not, or if the local agency does not meet the MOE for SB, for Measure L, then the Stanislas Council of Government, who controls and disperses Measure L funds, they would withhold the amount of funds that we did not meet. So if our MOE was 1.6 and we spent $1 million, StanCOG would hold $600,000 that were otherwise due to us. And so that's the repercussions of this, the expense of discretionary funds and tying future expenses to that.
Thank you.
So if we, you know, let's say hypothetically, if the $5 million, so we have to spend 1.6, has our city ever had problems spending $1.6 million on our road network? Have we never been, has it been issue meeting that threshold for the obvious needs of our community?
We did have a problem with $50,000.
We have not had a problem per se because, you know, those funds haven't been made available. We haven't left, you know, quote-unquote, any monies on the table. We haven't lost any federal or state grants. We have not given back any Measure L or, you know, old Prop 42 or gas tax funds before, so it hasn't been an issue before. You know, the biggest impediment is the time it takes to design a project, get a contractor on board, and have it spent.
And, you know, this is not a question for you, but just for the record, I don't think that there's anyone in the city of Turlock that wants us to reduce our efforts in maintaining our roads. It's the number-one issue that the public has been asking for us to address, and I'm hopeful that we can get consensus here in the council to put a line item on for general fund road repair and road maintenance.
Vice Mayor?
How many shovel-rody jobs do we have at this time? I mean, like, if we, if you got the go-ahead, how many are you ready to go out and do right now?
Currently, none. We don't, we do not have, we do not have a backlog of projects that are just ready to go, unfortunately. We have one project that is probably 85% ready. It needs to be retouched up based upon local development that has occurred from our last time we developed the plans. That project is Lander Avenue from roughly D Street all the way down to Caltrans right away. It was supposed, it was identified to be funded through federal grants, but the project cost came in higher, and that was a section we had to eliminate. But that's the closest one that we have right now.
How long is it going to take us to get up and running on, I mean, hypothetically, you've got $5 million right now, how long is it going to take you to get pavement on the roads?
Well, so if the goal is to get those projects paved as soon as possible, what I would recommend is the city consult out for the engineering and design because we currently don't have the staff or the capacity to do that. An engineering project for road rehabilitation, again, it depends on the type of project. If it's a slurry seal, we could probably have something painted black maybe this fall, if not early spring. If it's a larger project, we could probably have something identified for starting construction in next summer or late fall 2022. You know, the design process, the SEQA process, the public contract process. the, the public co-contract process, unfortunately, it takes time.
It takes a long time, right. So when we, when we allocate funds, we're not going to be allocating five million dollars, and it's going to be spent all at the same time. This is going to be in stages, and we'll be ramped up. So I just want everybody to know, when you say five million dollars, it's not spent immediately. It's stretched out over the year, two, possibly three.
Correct. And if I can add to that, too, you know, the city's been successful in having these shovel-ready projects in the past. And if, you know, if council wants to invest in making shovel-ready projects so that we can take, take advantage of opportunities, whether they're grant-funded, or other, you know, monies become available, we're that much more competitive to receive those construction funds.
I think that would be a wise idea.
And I, I understand the, the time and, and energy and really time it takes to planning these projects. We go through it every, every time we talk about our, about 7.4 million dollars worth of road fundings from the combination of, of pockets of, of funds that you've, you've talked about. I would imagine that anything coming out of the general fund directly for road maintenance would be a part of that overall road strategy, but it would be more dedicated towards the road maintenance side of it, because like you've already talked about, the identification of those projects happen when we, you know, plan it and have like a calendar year to do so. So I totally understand that. My second question is, so with, with the augmentations that you've talked about tonight, would that set you up in a position to where you would be able to take a large allocation for road maintenance to, to make those, or are there other positions that, that you would need to talk about to make that happen quicker?
Yep. Thank you for the question. The positions identified in augmentation help bring the staffing levels back up so we can take on more projects, not necessarily just road projects. If the council were to allocate a large block of funding with the intent of having that paved as soon as possible, the best approach would probably be to hire a consultant, a consultant design firm to prepare those plans. Ideally, I would have one staff member that I need in addition to what I've requested today to manage that process, make sure that the consultant is honoring the terms and conditions of their proposal, that we're meeting the target deadlines and goals. That position does not have to be an engineer. Engineers are hard to fill also. So that position could be more of a project manager. Capital project coordinator is a position that we've previously used in the past to kind of fill the intermediate gap between needing the technical experience and understanding versus needing the real world project management skills. So I would like to see a capital project coordinator to get the project in construction. More than likely, I would need one inspector to inspect the construction as it's occurring so we ensure that it's constructed properly and accurately. My existing inspection staff, you know, it would be tough to have them take on another, you know, or an additional five million dollar project with their existing workload.
I should have asked this first. Can you explain to all, to the public and to the new faces, we have our current road strategy that we have, that we, how we decided to divvy up the Measure A gas tax? How have we done that in the last couple of years?
Sure, yeah. So the existing strategy that previous council had passed identified the use of the available, we'll call it project funds, and we spoke about this roughly four and a half to five million dollars, to be split up between the street funding, or the street classification. So you'll have, maybe have heard of it as a 60-20-20 split. 60% of the available project funds would go towards local street residential roads. 20% would go towards arterial roads, and 20% would go towards collector roads. And so, you know, council identified they wanted to make a, a larger impact in residential roads as opposed to arterials and collectors. And so that was the, the funding split and the, the current standing direction.
Okay. So assuming we have a goal of making all roads in the city of Turlock at some point serviceable in the future, would increasing investments in just maintenance projects today, i.e. slurry seal projects, reduce the total cost required to get us there? Reducing the amount of roads that enter?
Correct, yeah.
State of required rehabilitation?
Yes, yeah. The, identifying the roads that are right on the cusp of falling between a road that is maintainable versus one that requires a more robust treatment, that is where you're going to achieve your best cost savings. You're going to save that road from falling into, you know, a, a different category that requires, maybe it requires an overlay, or some other treatment that is a lot more cost prohibitive. And so an investment in maintaining the existing infrastructure that is in good condition makes fiscal sense if you're talking about just a very limited amount of funds.
Would you, would you estimate that there is, and those are the quickest projects to be able to greenlight, right? Just the slurry seal maintenance projects?
Yes, those are typically the easiest. With the slurry seal, there is not the trigger for ADA upgrades and requirements. And so the, the plans, the drainage solutions, everything is, is a lot streamlined because you're not making physical modifications to the ground. You're just basically painting it black with a slurry emulsion.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's the number I want to know.
Okay.
Budget approval time. I would guess we could probably spend about five million dollars on those roads.
So as we look towards the, given some direction to, for staff to get us to the next area here, are there other things that, I mean, we've had a ton of road stuff. I know you guys had your separate ones with them when you first got elected. So let's going back to engineering, we, we have to set up something staff for how we pay it back. We can't continue, like something to be brought back to us so that we incrementally are paying back that engineering fund that we owe?
Actually, city, city manager Hampton and I had spoke earlier and had an idea about the engineering deficit. And he brought up the idea of using the transient occupancy tax, the TOT tax. A lot of the engineering deficit is caused by pre-development meetings. So whenever you're, you're planning a project, you, you have a pre-development meeting, you can't charge that to anybody. It's a general fund. And really, that is part of, it's, it's part of the growth of the city. It should be part of that transient occupancy tax monies. We do have a fair amount of that in there. Yeah, it's true. It's part of the general fund, but we should, I mean, we can name it specifically to assist in going back and paying back what we've already spent out of that fund. So that was a, that was one of, one of our ideas.
Yeah, we just have to, we can't keep kicking it down here and acting like it's not there. It's important. And as well, I think I'm stating the offense, but the finance and the admin services positions, I hope that they're in the next fiscal year already, the salary benefits, all of that, so that we don't have that mess up later.
So as, as you wrap up your discussions, I'm keeping tally of your list, and I'm going to be seeking direction because it is not the intent to bring back a workshop, a general fund for the workshop. It is the intent to bring you your general fund budget for adoption on the first meeting of June. So we need to know where is your comfort zone of utilizing your available revenue. And you know, the only available unspent revenue that is outside of maintaining your base budget right now is your cannabis and your Measure A money. So, and obviously, there's always that chance that our revenues will exceed forecasts in the current fiscal year. I think the next fiscal year is a dangerous fiscal year. It's unknown to everybody. When COVID ends, what's going to happen with people's jobs, their homes, their apartments, so on and so forth. But right now, US residents, and I applaud that, and that has resulted in additional sales tax to the city. So although we couldn't have forecasted that, no one could have forecasted that when you adopted your current budget, but we are seeing that we're likely to end the fiscal year with more general fund revenue than we forecasted in the budget.
Vice Mayor.
And speaking of the cannabis fund, I think we've already pretty much said that we want cannabis saved for the Columbia Pool project. So I, I am hesitant to spend cannabis money on anything. As far as Measure A goes, I think we all kind of have some ideas on Measure A. Do we want to get into?
You need that.
Our ideas? Okay. So I'll just go first. My idea is, first of all, I'd like to see us put 10% or about 1.1 million back into the general fund reserves. I think it's important to maintain our, our general fund reserves. It calls for it in the Measure A to sustain ourselves. Then roads, I'd like to see us put about 5.5 or 50% of our first year's estimate to roads. I'd like to see us put the police training. I believe that that would be absolutely in, within Measure A's purview.
Training or hiring?
Their training budget.
The work that was taken away, right?
Right, renew their training budget and, and possibly even get a little bit more in there with today's climate. I think it's important that our police officers are, are well-trained, and we, we have to get them back on schedule with their yearly training or their bi-yearly trainings. And then I, I'd like to see us put the monies into the fire feasibility study. And then I think that we should also not commit 100% of it because we will be entering into negotiations with our, our unions for the next year's salaries. So I think we need to reserve monies for those negotiations. So those are my suggestions.
So did we talk about the fact that we were looking at perhaps doing it in a segment of three, three years so that it wasn't, the, the tax, the Measure A tax wasn't spent and getting allocated back and forth, the whole of it during election times? I thought we talked about it. I thought we kind of agreed that it would, it was better to kind of start the allocation. Obviously, it's going to be quarterly anyway, but at least we'll know percentages when Measure A Oversight Committee looks at it. I'm just curious. But I kind of like what you're saying. I think for roads, it gets a little murky when you, you're doing a percent. I think five million a year is, for three years, is going to put us basically down the road, and no pun intended, for an additional six years or something of that nature that we know that's going to get spent, not necessarily to that amount. But we're going to make a serious bang with that, at that point. And then the reserves, I'd love to know what a 10% looks like when you look at everything else, just because I, I want to build it back up, but I don't want to do it. It's money just sitting there when there are things that we need. For, for example, obviously, fire and police need to get to the calls, and so, and, and even Parks and Rec, we need those vehicles taken care of. We cannot have health and safety issues any longer where there's no hot water, or there's holes in the roof and things of that nature. That's unacceptable. So those things have to be addressed, and if that reduces that reserve number, I'm okay with that as well.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor, on that. I really want to caution us that no matter, with the amount of oversight and trying to distinguish this amount of fund away from the general fund, the more it's going to take away from it actually being effective immediately, and there are clear needs and clear holes that we've created by trying to cut in order to save our, our general fund reserve that need to be filled and that are justifiable by, by Measure A. So, and I don't want it to be a bad thing that we are using some of Measure A to replenish the services that our general fund provides to the public, because that's what the general fund does. It does provide services directly to the public. So I, I understand the caution. I appreciate it. But at the same time, I don't, I don't want to end up happening exactly what the mayor started to articulate, what is that we can't end up sitting on this money and not using it, because at the end of the day, it's not our money, and there are clear needs. That staff isn't a great job identifying fixes to. And if that comes down to having it where that, that a deficit budget is something that we're going to be seeing, because we've separated that Measure A money out of that general fund, we need to be aware that we have an opportunity and the, and the control and power to augment those funds back into the general fund to fill those holes that are clearly identified within the budget and the augmentations that you guys have provided to us.
So for me, I also would like to see what 10% reserves looks like. Everybody knows, I think the general consensus is the COVID window is closing. And when that happens, nobody knows what the economy is going to look like next year. God forbid, it tank and then sales tax plummet, and we're sitting here going, oh, well, we spent all of our money last year because we had it. And so I think reserves are very important because COVID is very unknown. The repercussions are going to be very unknown, and I think it would be very irresponsible just to start spending money and disregarding what our reserve looks like. It's called a rainy day fund for a reason.
Councilwoman?
On, on the subject of COVID, has, have we had discussions related to how the American Rescue Plan funding is going to be fitting into this particular budget cycle?
The American Rescue and Recovery Act is being managed by the US Treasury Department. Several members of staff, to include Julie Burke and myself and Nadine, have watched it very carefully. Each meeting, you hear different information, although it's coming from the Treasury Department, from the same department. I think it's a very fluid situation right now. The only thing I can tell you for absolute certainty is that right out the gate, they made it very clear that, that government entities may not debt serve pension. And that's the only direction that we have received. And so we still don't know when the money will be allocated. We don't know what conditions will be placed on the money. We know that although there was allegedly supposed to be no strings, all I have seen come out of the meetings to date are a slew of reporting requirements, to the degree that we'll probably have to consider adding halftime staff, just merely to handle the reporting requirements. So Councilmember Nasrati, I'm sorry, but I just, it's a question that we all have, and I just, we don't have any information. And it's not just Turlock. It's every city in the United States doesn't have information. And city managers that are on these, across the US, that are on these meeting, these Zoom meetings and these briefings, are all beginning to get equally as frustrated and making sharp, sharp comments about, can we, can we just get this done and get it out the door so we can get help? So we don't have any indication about when it's going to arrive. We don't have a clear picture of what conditions are going to be placed on it. And we certainly can't even tell you what the real number is going to be, because we've heard three different numbers since it first rolled out, or since, since it was first proposed and passed.
And one of the other problems with it is that the last group of monies that came, they didn't have the rules and regulations. And so it's set there in a pot for so long that they're trying to answer all the questions before they allocate the money. And that's why it's like every day you hear, no, it's going to be this, no, over here. So I don't want us to count that money. And I know when it comes back, you know, first thing I would be thinking is if we can use it towards setting, you know, getting rid of some of the debt we have that's not first, radios, things of that nature, so that we reduce our debt. But I don't know what the regulations are, so I don't want to go too far down there and spend any of it at this point. Are there things that you're still needing from us?
Oh, yeah, we need a lot of information from you. So let me just.
Let's go down the line.
Let me just recap. So what I have to date, and I'm going to ask Nadine and Julie to chime in here if I've missed something. What I've had to date is the discussion, and I'm using the word discussion because you have not taken any votes, open up the fire and police chief positions, and I have a question on that. Do you mean open them up and freeze the positions of the staff members that are being, that are filling those, or do you mean open them up and sustain the positions? So open up and freeze.
Freeze.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then, secondly, prioritizing road maintenance to sustain streets through slurry seals. So I have that down here. Increase park maintenance, I have that down here. This is lawn mowing schedule, but with that, we know comes many other things, not just mowing the lawn. Fire department stations fully staffed, I have that down here. And so I have those all labeled under general fund, because then you switched to Measure A. And so what I've heard so far is 10% toward the general fund reserve. to Measure A. And so what I've heard so far is 10% toward the general fund reserve. And so when I say general fund reserve, it's unallocated general fund. You can choose to move it wherever you want it. I should say, I should say unassigned, not unallocated. I'm sorry. And that's based upon our forecast about $1.2 million. 50% of it toward roads, and that's 50% against the total amount. That would be approximately 5.6 million. And then I've heard police training and fire feasibility study. The fire feasibility study is merely a placeholder in case it's needed. It may not be needed, and I've estimated $25,000, so that's an insignificant fraction of this. And then the police training budget, chief, I'm not clear.
About $150,000.
About $150,000. So in reality, we're talking about 62% to 63% of Measure A money addressed in your Measure A. The one other question that I do need from you is that if you're, if you're not going to, let me restate that. I will need to know if you want to continue with the recruitment of the ASD and finance directors because we don't want to continue if we're not going to allocate.
I asked that you put that in the, the next fiscal year, remember?
Okay, I will add that to the measure. I mean, not to the measure, I'm sorry, to the general fund.
To the general fund.
That's what I have. So what do I need from you? We need some, we need some actionable direction. Actionable in my mind is items that the council has voted on and that I can go back with finance staff and begin building the final 21, 22 general fund budget. And the next time you see it will be exactly the direction that you give here to us today. We are bringing it to you in the first meeting of June. So if, and we will be getting out information to you well in advance. We're not going to wait until the day before meeting. We're going to get you out information in advance. But, you know, candidly, if you make major adjustments, and this city has been in this situation before, if you make major adjustments, staff may not be able to turn that around in your second meeting. So it's a problem. And to the best of my knowledge, you cannot adopt a budget at a special meeting. It has to be done at a regularly scheduled meeting.
Mr. Hampton, you did, you did forget the setting a repayment for the engineering. How, how we're going to do that? Because I think that's.
You, you haven't given me enough information to even.
Is the TOT concept feasible?
Yes, we talked about the TOT concept, and so in, in practice, not theory, but in practice, the engineering department facilitates pre-development meetings with staff across the city. It is an economic development function of the city, and it's intended to promote and make, and to simplify development. So we get people in the door, get them into, get them the information, the questions answered. You have engineers, the planners, the fire department, the police department. We have, you know, our housing, economic development. We have anybody that we need there to get them one-stop shop for all their information. For engineering, they have no way to expense that type of cost, and that has played in, that along with many of the other things engineering does, that they don't have a project to assign it to. So when you look at it from an economic development standpoint, it would only be reasonable to associate it with TOT, which TOT historically has always been viewed by, by the city as a manner to reinvest in economic development because it's as a result of economic development. When you put people in hotels because they're coming to us because of the economy, whether it's for recreational activities through Parks and Rec, then it needs to be, it should be reinvested to sustain.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Two things. One on that is I understand that we've utilized TOT for planning for capital improvement projects in some of our recreation facilities. So I just want to be caught, like, I think that that is also an economic driver. It's one of our biggest in terms of having awesome sports complex for people from out of the area coming competing here. So I really appreciate the idea that these planning, pre-planning meetings are something that we provide free for the public, but that also puts that division in a precarious situation because our goal is to be self-sustaining in terms of their, their funding. So I think, I think it's a great idea to explore, but I just want to throw a caution out there that we also use that money for the capital improvements. I know we previously have planned it for Padretti Park improvements, things like that. So just, just, just to be aware of that. The other thing, and it's, and it's my fault, I apologize to me and your Hampton for not articulating it clearly enough. I guess my, my point of being, of being open or at least understanding that the opportunity to use the Measure A fund to augment the needed staffing augmentations requested by staff for their next budget. So if we do have a deficit budget presented for the general fund, I would like to see a percentage of what that would look like if it came out of Measure A be presented to us. So we can at least see this is a X percent of Measure A if we do come, if you guys do come back with the deficit that we would see out of the general fund.
As you know, the general fund-based budget that was developed for you, not including any augmentations, is currently deficit spent by $1.2 million. And I'm going to be very careful about walking down this road. It, but it appears that our revenue for the current fiscal year is going to exceed forecasts, but I would not guarantee it. I, I, I would not guarantee it whatsoever because it's just too finicky and, you know, in the national worldwide pandemic that we are dealing with here. But if I talk to all the experts, which Nadine, Julie and I have, if I talk to our local experts, the two sitting right over there, by all indications, we're likely to see in excess of $1 million of additional revenue, and it could be even up to 2 million. So your general fund reserve, as a whole, I'm calculating everything together, but what you have available to you is your unallocated reserve, which is at about $1.8, $1.9 million right now. That, I'm sorry, unassigned, not unallocated. I'm sorry, old man, old stuff, right?
The right room.
So unassigned could actually be at the end of this year, into the two to three, well, it's definitely going to be in the 2 million. It could be in the two and a half to three and a half million. And I know somebody's going to beat me up over this because we just don't make these kinds of forecasts without data. We have the data, but I'm not willing to put it, put on it. So I'm not, I would not advise you not to adopt a deficit-spent budget in the neighborhood of 1.2 to 1.5 million. I would tell you that that is safe. I'm not looking at finance staff when I do this because this goes against everything that they've taught me.
Need a couple more police officers in there.
Since 2005, by the way, but I think it's safe. I also want to take this opportunity to share with you. When we talk about using TOT funds, I want you to know the main driver of your TOT funds are your parks and recreation programs. And whatever we do, if we disturb those activities, whether, you know, it's softball tournaments, soccer tournaments, your TOT will sink rapidly.
True.
Is that a fair statement, Ms. Van Gilder? So when I talk about using TOT, I'm not talking about reducing the allocation that supports the recreational activities.
So what, what is our TOT right now, this year, the last, the last amount, without, without, just roughly?
Nadine has given it to you exactly right now.
The balance in the TOT?
Sure. And Ms. Van Gilder, how much are we planning for the lights? We were planning for lights in, in Padretti, correct? I'm asking like 20 questions. I'm going to keep throwing around.
That's okay.
Mayor, what you're referring to is the set aside that the previous councils had, had worked on. We plan to bring to you in the non-general fund conversation regarding the 301 budget to request a supplement to that because while we have about 400, and Nadine will correct me if I'm wrong, about 450 set aside for lights. Is that right, Julie? When we did our last bid, we were about 320-something short just because the bids came in higher. So we want, plan to have that conversation with council as something to consider. But the, the great news about that, though, is we think we might have an alternative funding source. So it's kind of like worst-case scenario, just be aware, we may need to ask for an additional allocation, but we think we have non-city funds identified for that project, fingers crossed, through a potential grant opportunity. So I think that's what, what you were asking about. Okay.
And while you're up here, Nadine, then I'm also curious, with the COVID, aren't we anticipating TOT to drop or, I mean, because people weren't necessarily staying here unless they were felons that were sent here, right? So just curious.
We projected TOT to drop with COVID. It has dropped somewhat, probably not as much as we projected. We were very conservative, but there was a slight drop in TOT as a result of COVID. The TOT, is, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
The TOT projected fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2021 is 1.336 million. In 2122, the projected budget for TOT would increase that by $266,000. So we would probably be at about 1.6 million in the projected TOT balance at the end of 2122.
So if we were spending just 300,000 down each year, would that, I mean, is that an impact? Does that help at all towards it, or do we have to just do it all at once? Towards the engineering fund that we owe, Mr.?
That's really the discretion of council. I, I think that the auditors are absolutely looking for us to adopt a verifiable strategy to address that unfunded liability within our annual audits.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think that's a great strategy, and if that could come back and we could see exactly what that would look like, how much do we really spend on staff time for these pre-development meetings? Would that equal an impact that is worthy going down? And even if it isn't, I still think it's a, it's a, it's a very justifiable adjustment to how we look at these, the, this, this service that we provide to our city and to try to develop or encourage development.
You, Mr. Hampton?
So I just want to turn to Nathan Bray, our city engineer. So Nathan, in that $300,000 allocation annually, I know in 2021, I'm sorry, in 2019, 2020, there was a general fund allocation of 295,000 to dismiss deficit spending. Once again, there, it, the transfer occurred to prevent more amassing of the deficit, and this year, there was a small amount, less than $50,000 allocated to offset deficit spending in the current year. So if you could please speak to your view of 300K, will, will, will we be able to allocate all of that to the deficit? Or are we still going, going to be deficit spending and engineers?
Yeah, so when I, when I hear the allocation of 300K, to me, that tells me council is wanting to make an investment above and beyond arresting the deficit. It's, it's almost paying down previous, previous deficit spending. Currently, the engineering fee subsidy or the engineering fee program identifies, based upon our projected activity, that the subsidy based upon the fee reductions that council has taken equates to about $145,000 a year. That was the estimate for last year and is similar again to this year. So that just takes into account the fee subsidies, of which pre-development meetings are one of those. We've identified the cost. We identified that we're not charging anyone for it, so it goes into that calculation. In addition, the first year in fiscal year 2019, we identified we needed roughly $295,000 to make the engineering fund whole for that year. It included those, those fee subsidies as well as other non-billable or unbillable items. So by my estimation, the fiscal year proposed budget, the fiscal year '22 proposed budget identifies that $145,000 for the fee subsidy. And I, I can grab, let me grab the exact amount for the additional money needed to offset, so the engineering fee doesn't go further into the red.
Mr. Hampton?
Mayor, the 300,000 allocation toward the deficit, if it's restricted toward the deficit, will, will erase your deficit over about a 10-year period, which is a strategy verifiable, and I think it's a significant strategy.
One of the questions I have, I mean, I know that we don't know for certain what the American Rescue Recovery can be used for. There was an indication by the mayor potentially use it for any sort of debts. Would this be potentially something that could be used, we could use that for as well?
I think it's safe to say that it may be. So may some of our other debt. We've identified other debt in the city that if we satisfied, we could avail by not making the payments on that over the next three to five years. We could avail as much as 400,000 annually, freeing up money to provide services, further services. And yes, if, if there were no restricts or restrictions preventing us from applying 2.5 million, yes, you could wipe out the debt in one fell mood.
But it's not growing, is it?
I'm sorry?
It's not growing, though?
No, the city has taken measures over the current fiscal year and the previous fiscal year to prevent any further deficit spending. So.
There's no cost savings?
But it is an allocation from the, from the general fund, which, as we just discussed, is appropriate. So that's, that's the issue. So you've identified a source to pay down your 2.5 million of unfunded liability. So now how do we keep engineering? If it's 145 a year or if it's 200 a year, how do we keep it from going against our 300,000 a year? And that's something that we're going to have to work out.
Okay.
And I know Mr. Bray has told me time and time again, as did Mr. Pittcock, that they engage in a lot of activity toward economic development that, that they don't have the ability to expense to the general fund. And this goes back, this goes back to Mr. Wasden's days as a city manager, when he had, when he took the approach with the blessing of the city, and I certainly supported it. And that was, that engineering would be pulled out of the general fund and would be required to be self-sustaining. The problem is.
Then we started reducing.
If you increase the developer fees to make them self-sustaining, you would end development in the community.
So, Mr. Bray, yeah?
Yeah, just to recap. So the 145,000 that's identified, that is for the fee subsidies in the budget before you is an additional 139,000. This is to offset the expenses versus the anticipated revenues. One thing to keep in mind is the augmentation request for the additional staffing actually generates revenue, so that revenue would help reduce that general fund obligation or transfer.
Okay, so that, it's around 300,000 basically would cover back, back and forth. We'd be paying off that, but we wouldn't be increasing your costs. So if we had a line for economic development and it went specifically into Mr. Bray's line items, would that in fact help us? Because it sounds like we're, I mean, I know, I remember, we were like, okay, it's a bad time, we want people to, we'll reduce the fees, and that's where we set you for failure. I totally remember this. But there's got to be a way, when we know that economic development is going to create more money, that we start putting something away to, to set it so that it doesn't go under. No?
Well, I don't, I don't, Mayor, sorry, from speaking on your turn, I don't think you necessarily set us up for failure, right? We balanced the costs to the developers versus the potential economic development gain. You know, in this regard, the engineering division is much like the planning division, where, you know, the planning division only recovers a small portion of their actual costs. So in this regard, engineering and planning are very similar.
Councilwoman Armonas?
I, I 100% agree with you, Mayor, on that. I think that when you say, you know, a slump sum of money going towards economic development, to me, I hear creating programs that incentivize developers to come in, and we can augment some of those fees to encourage them in a more affordable way to develop here. And I think that that would take us taking some time to create those programs, and that makes sense. I think we are blessed also with an opportunity to have a member of the council that would be able to look at some of these fees and see if there's opportunities here where we know our developers, developers look at those fees and say, hey, this, this would be a great place for. know our developers look at those fees and say, hey, this would be a great place for us to augment some of that, coming from another source of revenues, that we're directly investing back into our community, back in developers, that are going to make more money for the city in the long term. That's what I hear with that, and I'm totally supportive of looking into something like that, whether it's creating an ad hoc of council members to look into that. I'm not sure if it would be, we have really the time to talk about it now in this budget cycle, but that's what I hear when I hear, you know, economic development, okay, how do we make it more incentivized for individuals to come develop here in full development? Things like that, affordable housing, is there ways that we can kind of offset that with some other pots of money?
Vice Mayor?
Have we done a fee survey lately, other municipalities, and what their fee structures are?
Yeah, the last, the last time we did a fee survey was, I guess it was 2020, it was just a little bit, about a year ago. The fee studies sometimes are hard to compare, like to like. You know, a lot of engineering programs in different cities, they're within their general fund comparison. So what we were able to glean from the comparison is that we were in line with our surrounding cities, you know, we weren't astronomically high and we weren't giving away the farm.
And so that tells me that we need to stay pretty close to where we're at with our fees and not raise them, otherwise we're gonna jeopardize our developments.
All right, so as we're tickling these things off, Mr. Hampton, get us back on track, where else are you looking for direction?
I just wanted to follow up, I hate to do this as Councilmember Larson, I wanted to make a complete note of your point about a percentage of Measure A, I'm not sure exactly what you were referring to.
With the deficit spending budget that we're probably going to have, that we're gonna have in front of us, I understand that there could potentially be augmentations from the DAS in terms of which ones, you know, which augmentations are we approving, which ones were not. I just want to be able to have the informed decision of how, if we're approving, if we're approving that deficit budget, how much of that, that percent of that deficit budget would, is equal to a percentage of Measure A? So if Measure A is, you know, the, I'm talking about the full estimation, so $11 million, and our deficit is, you know, $4 million, what's a percentage of that, so we can make the educated decision of are we not going to use that, or are we going to use that?
Thank you, that's very clear. And it prompts, just a thought I want to share with you. I know that as I've worked with you individually, answering your questions on the budget and the workshops, and again, I appreciate the depth in which all five of you have been involved in this. You know, I will again publicly recommend to council that they proceed with this as a living document. Your budget truly is a living document. You don't have to answer all the questions here today. You can have quarterly-
Then why'd you ask us?
Well, hang on. You can have quarterly budget workshops, you could have monthly budget workshops if necessary. And you can meter your approach as your comfort zone is met, you can meter your approach as you start seeing the sales tax revenue quarterly reports. And those are the types of things that you can absolutely do. So we can, you can certainly adopt your general fund 2122 budget with allocations as you've identified here. You can adopt it with a deficit spending. You can call for your first budget workshop the first week of September and say, okay, where are we? It's my preference, and Nadine has worked hard on this, in your adopted final budget to leave the augmentation requests on the final document.
That'd be helpful.
So that there's no question about what was asked for, what was funded, and what was not funded, so that you're working off of the living document. And this should be a living document every year, and when you're faced with a challenge that this council's faced with, that's never happened in my history of 38 years in government, it's dangerous. And so I appreciate the metered approach, I would recommend that you stick with it. I think what you've given us here are some great solutions to address some unfunded liabilities, to reinstate some of your priorities. But I also know that tomorrow morning, I'm going to be in a room with a bunch of department heads that say, hey, so what am I supposed to do? And my answer to them will be my answer to you, metered approach, slow and steady forward, and add it as we go along and as you're comfortable, as the money's there. So that's why I suggest that adopting a $1.2 million deficit budget and adding these additional. And if you get sticker shock in June, at the first meeting in June, you can absolutely say, timeout, we want to bring this down a little bit, bring this, we're gonna continue this to the next meeting. And that's why we were working toward the first of June. So hopefully that brings you some relief. The information that I have, in addition to what I rattled off to you previously, I now have added on the general fund side, TOT tax allocation toward serving the debt at 300K a year. And under the Measure A, I have the clarification from council member, I'm sorry, council member Larson, and my only question is that something that you want to do? Do you wanna, do you wanna, do you want to identify a percentage of your Measure A fund that you want to, that you want to provide to us, that we will add to offset any deficit that we bring back to you in June? And what percentage is that? Or do you want to make that decision then, knowing that, we want you to know, you've got a safety net, and that is the second meeting in June?
I would prefer to wait till the meeting to see what it looks like and where the numbers are in relativity to the Measure A, et cetera. I think that that'll be more comforting for me than to just say right now, yes or no, because I don't know everything yet.
And that was my direction. I just want to be able to see it, have it be articulated to us clearly. That's exactly what, the mayor captured my point.
Because it will be further deficits. I'm looking at the general fund, it will, the deficit will go up. I'm sure that people that, like Mr. Treewaller, that, I mean, he's here, he's hearing what we're saying, but the people that do not participate in this, that read the headlines, city adopts $2 million deficit budget. It's gonna be hard for us to get them up to speed in the two hours you've spent here working on this budget. So I think it's a safe approach. I have enough information, but I do want to open up to any of my staff. I don't want them, you know, if they had something to add here or a question, finance staff, or any of the department directors.
So just while they're coming up here, just, so the engineering, is that gonna be a special resolution that we are gonna vote and say that we're gonna pay 300,000 from TOT down until it's paid off, or how's that gonna work?
So if you adopt it as part of the budget for fiscal year 2122, are you wanting to adopt it for that year and for future years? And so it either would need to be that it's brought back in each fiscal year budget, or there could be some sort of resolution or policy that council takes that it's for X period of time, based upon the repayment. And that could be, I think, in conjunction with, and Nadine can confirm.
My, yeah, my will would be until it's resolved, until it's paid off.
Good to know. All right, I'm sorry, you're here, you have some other comments?
Well, when my boss gives me the opportunity to come up and share some additional thoughts, I take that opportunity.
You ran, I know.
I want to first thank council for consideration of all of our requests, and as the city manager has said previously, we find ourselves in a very unique position. This has been a long time coming. I feel it necessary to speak on behalf of my department when I say that the last 10 years have been a consistent annual reduction in the level of resources and service to the community. And so as we are coming to you with our various requests, and you're having to weigh all of those, the benefits and the impacts on service, I hope that you will make that part of your conversation as you sit from the DAS, to acknowledge to the community about the fact that we may not be able to implement everything at once, and so service levels may not change overnight. But then I think it's even, it's important to acknowledge it for our employees who have worked so hard, and, you know, that we're hearing it, you know, you hear that we have these needs, but that we may not be able to do everything at once. But I know that I'm encouraged to hear that council's looking to address some longstanding challenges that have been issues for many, many years, well beyond the last 10 years. And then, you know, I'm also hopeful that it appears that we'll be able to see, hopefully, some improvements in the level of service that we can provide to the community. My, you know, speaking from my department, we want to be able to be proactive again, and we just haven't had that opportunity. Everything's been so reactive. When we talk about our facilities, we're losing our major infrastructure, we're losing it. We're not keeping up on it, and so the dollar amount that we invest today is just gonna continue to compound over the years if we don't take some steps to try and save what we have. It's the same conversation you're having about your roads. So, you know, our plight is no different than any other issue, but I just really want to say I appreciate it. I know this is kind of an uncomfortable position for everybody to be in, you know, how do we spend this money? But we're here to support whatever direction that you give us, and, you know, we're always here to answer any questions and provide additional information if you need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
I feel like I should just park my seat up here. One thing that didn't come across in my presentation, and I want to make sure the council understands the priority that I place upon this, was a request from the fire department, actually as the deputy fire marshal. That is probably development's number one ask, in terms of improving service, is to address help and resources available for our fire marshal. He does permitting, he does plan review, he does inspection, and he's a one-man show. And so from the development perspective, I would love to have engineers and staff, I would love to have planners, I would love to have building inspectors. But if it has to be prioritized to one, I'm gonna defer to Chief Carlson and get some help in our fire marshal service.
Chief, Carlson?
Yeah, I just wanted to actually echo what Nathan was saying. One thing that he did leave out as well is our fire marshal is advancing succession plan is something we've talked about. I remember since I got up here, since Mr. Hampton was the city manager before, and in the fire department, that's the one position that for succession planning is different than all the rest. So in addition to the, you know, the amount of help that it would give and the turnaround time and everything to help development and everything else, there's that consideration I just would like you to think about as well.
Chief Williams?
Thank you, I didn't want to be the only one left out.
I know, right?
Like the other, like my partner directors up here, I just want to thank you. I know that it's a unique situation, something unlike we've faced before in the city, where you have all of these requests, and you have to choose which ones to prioritize at the beginning of the budget year. And I also appreciate the measured approach and the opportunity to revisit the budget on an ongoing basis throughout the year. That's not something that we're used to, but it sounds great. So I would just ask, on behalf of the police department, I appreciate the training, it's absolutely critical that we have trained police officers and non-sworn staff in the police department. But as you go through the requests, restaffing, restoring our positions to the levels that they were two years ago, I would just ask that you keep that in mind. Coupled with the equipment and vehicle replacement, it's absolutely necessary within the department. So I would just ask you to consider both of those. Thank you.
So food for thought, Mr. Hampton, does, I know the fire marshal has a specific role, but couldn't building inspectors, and they're probably paid just a little bit less or something, couldn't they do a lot of the checkoffs of stuffs? Could we augment like, you know, 960s or whatever to help with that stuff? Or is that? No, the fire marshal's got his final final, but there's a lot of like the helpers below that we, could we not use a different role?
So, yes, we could, and we do. So neighborhood services has a long history in the city, which is really your code enforcement or code compliance, and that's a policy decision of the city. We're currently engaged in a code compliance program, which is failing the residents of this community significantly. It was a decision made back in 2011, as the economy had tanked and all kinds of radical measures were made. Many cities have these in their police departments, or in their building inspections departments, public works departments, they fit anywhere, that's not the issue. The issue is, is going to be code enforcement or code compliance, and they're staffed differently. And so as this city pursues its fire service study, that will require you to also look at your neighborhood services, because it's currently a part of that. And so is it best, is it best fit in neighborhood, or in the fire department? Or is it better fit in another department? Is it appropriately staffed? Is it council's, is it council's policy to pursue neighborhood compliance, which is primarily our letter writing campaign with no teeth, especially when you have, you do not have the administrative hearing process in place, which we do not, versus code compliance, which it is, you gain compliance through education, but at the end of the day, you're gonna be accountable to comply. And that may, you know, be after your second or third warning, or whatever it is. So I think that that will be part, not think, I absolutely assure you, it'll have to be part of your fire service study.
Okay, thank you. This side of the table, anybody have any last? Nadine, any pitches? Any cautions? Did we forget to do something? Nothing? Okay. All right, then you have enough to work with?
I do, and we'll find out how well I performed in June when we bring you the budget back.
All right, thank you all for coming. At this point, anybody in disagreement for adjournment? All right, thank you, everybody.